We're gonna blame you.
I know, I'd like to ask you guys what's my calling.
All right, good evening. We'll call the board meeting of the Escondido Union School Board meeting to order. Time is now six o'clock on Thursday, October 12th. Do we have any public comments for closed session? All right, we have no comments, we will adjourn to our closed session. Thank you.
Good evening.
Are they working? Good evening. We will reconvene the board, Escondido Union School District Board meeting of October 12th. If I could have a representative from Bear Valley Middle School, Mr. Carter Parker, come to the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carter. All right. I'd like to recognize that all board members are present for this evening's meeting, and we'll move on to our report of closed session, which I will read. In closed session, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement with employee 488470 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee 648344 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee 658398 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered and took action to approve the compulsory leave of absence for employee 618862 by a vote of five to zero. And finally, in closed session, the board took action to approve an agreement with employee number 637784 by a vote of five to zero. That concludes our report of closed session. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on, item C6, we have a motion for approval of minutes of the meeting of September 15th, 2023.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please manifest. That's, motion passes.
Wait a minute. Minutes of?
September 15th.
I abstain.
That's right. So we have a, all in favor? Those opposed and those abstained? Motion passes four zero one. Thank you, Mrs. Gardner. Approval of minutes from the meeting of September 21st, 2023. Who have a motion?
Move approval of the minutes of September 21st, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. I will be abstaining as I was absent from that. All in favor? Motion passes four zero to one. All right, moving on to our recognitions this evening. I'd feel ya.
Yes, so we are very pleased once again to honor students from across our district with our Student Excellence Awards, the SE Awards. So tonight, we've invited some of our school principals to come and share a bit of information about their school as well as their selection of the Student Excellence Awards. So we'd like to start off and invite up the principal of Bear Valley Middle School, Jason Reske.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Olson, School Board, Dr. Barr and Cabinet. My name is Jason Reske, and I'm the principal at Bear Valley Middle School, and I'm excited and proud to share with you our four school site champions this evening. I would first like to recognize the Bear Valley family members in attendance this evening. Please stand to be recognized. Thank you for being here. Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge the Bear Valley staff in attendance this evening. I believe there's three of them back there. Please stand. Thank you for being here. Before I introduce our four champions, I would like to share some of the positive work with our students and staff that we have been doing at Bear Valley this year. All right. At Bear Valley, we work with our students to be empowered learners by having a focus on the Bear Valley Way. The Bear Valley Way is a path to success that we work on daily through instruction, PBIS lessons, Bear TV, and other platforms so that our students are confident, accountable, respectful, engaged, and successful. By learning the Bear Valley Way, our students learn the structures and routines to be successful not only at Bear Valley and in high school, but are also exposed to real world and community issues. They learn to believe in themselves and have the confidence to be successful, not only in school, but become positive members in our community. At Bear Valley, thank you. At Bear Valley, we provide many opportunities for our students to be effective communicators through numerous activities students are exposed to. We began the year with our Week of Welcome that consisted of numerous connection activities that allowed students to be receptive and responsive to the idea of others. This week included a school-wide assembly that focused on dance as a way to boost mental health and student motivation. At Bear Valley, we also continue our extensive after-school clubs that allow our students to communicate with purpose and express their ideas. These clubs this year include cooking, esports, which we just had our first competition, jazz band, Toastmasters, cycle cruising, Lego builders, theater, and many more. And then there's our, then there's our amazing web program, which stands for Where Everyone Belongs, where our seventh and eighth grade students work and communicate with our sixth graders throughout the year, sharing information and setting a good example. At Bear Valley, we also provide many opportunities for our students to be creative problem solvers. Over the past few years, the staff at Bear Valley has worked hard at creating effective and engaging instruction and activities that allow our students to ask questions, look at various points of view, and present solutions to problems. Not only can this instruction and activities be found in our core content classes, but also can be found in our award-winning elective classes that include Bear TV, robotics, Avid, Art, Yearbook, ASB, year-long Spanish, and our extensive music program. These classes provide many challenges for our students throughout the year, where students experience both success and failure that help them create a belief in themselves and a can-do attitude. Now I'd like to call our four champions to the podium. Come on up. Each of the following four students being recognized this evening are all excellent representatives of what the Bear Valley Way is all about. I would first like to introduce sixth grader Arya Chafin-Kiria?
Kirai.
Kirai?
Kirai.
Kirai, I almost had that. Here's what her teacher said about her. "Arya is an incredible student and human being. She continually impresses her teachers with her willingness to go above and beyond with her assignments. She tends to dive deeper and takes it upon herself to do more than required. In addition, she is kind to everyone. She regularly volunteers to participate and is always willing to help fellow classmates. In addition, Arya has displayed leadership skills without being bossy. She has a unique ability to learn about individual people and use that information to include people and make them feel good about themselves. Any teacher would love to have Arya in their class, and she exemplifies honor, pride, and respect on a daily basis." Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce two seventh graders, Fernando and Alejandro Vae. As you can see, they're related. Yes. And here is what their teachers say about these two. "Fernando and Alejandro Vae are exceptional students, friends, athletes, and leaders here on the Bear Valley campus and in the Escondido community. From big things like being web leaders or members of the FCE Soccer Club, to small things like always being willing to raise their hand to offer a thoughtful question or response. Fernando and Alejandro's daily actions show exactly what it means to live the Bear Valley Way and be accountable, engaged, and responsible community members. Their teachers are proud to recommend them and have them represent the seventh grade students at Bear Valley. Congratulations." And lastly, I would like to introduce eighth grader Carter Parker. Carter is a perfect example of what it means to follow the Bear Valley Way and is a great role model inside and outside of the classroom at Bear Valley Middle School. Carter is very bright, hardworking, positive, and insightful. Carter excels academically in all he does and respects all staff and classmates. He has a positive attitude about school and works diligently and meticulously through every task or assignment. He contributes to class discussions, collaborates well with all of his classmates, and is therefore an outstanding example of student excellence. Carter is not only a great student, but he is well-liked by his peers and teachers and enjoys having fun with friends on campus. We are very fortunate to have this terrific student at Bear Valley. Congratulations, Carter. All right, somebody take a couple of pictures for the group, then please come up and face the girl. All right. Arya, all that get worried.
All right, and next up, we're going to be having Bernardo Elementary School inviting up Principal Jeremy Lachey.
All right. Good evening, President Olson, members of the board, Dr. Barr and Cabinet. My name is Jeremy Lachey, and I am the proud principal of Bernardo Elementary School. Thank you for your time tonight to recognize some special mountaineers from Bernardo. And at this time, can I please have Owen, Katie, and Katrinka come on up here and join me? All right. I told these students that when Mr. Lachey gets nervous, he tends to hold his breath. So what's your job to remind me? Breathe. All right, good. So you guys will watch out for me. I don't want to pass out up here. Our parents and staff at Bernardo are exceptional in every way, and they've helped these students unlock their unlimited potential. So will Bernardo staff and parents who are here tonight, please stand at this time so we can recognize you? And grandparents, uncles, aunts, should've said anyone connected there. All right. Well, I want to begin just sharing a little bit about Bernardo with you tonight, and then we'll share some thoughts about you three. Make sure I do this right? There we go. All right. At Bernardo Elementary, our students are empowered learners. One example is our second-grade arcade, where the students design an arcade game using everyday household materials. This project incorporates engineering and math skills to build the games and then culminates with an event where kindergarten students come and they purchase tokens to play the game. Through this experience, our students are using their math and marketing skills while also engaging with their younger students to help them learn about game strategy and money. Who says arcade games don't have any educational value? Come on, these are good dad jokes here. Courtesy laugh at least. All right, thank you. All right. I'll beg for applause. I'm not above that. At Bernardo Elementary, our students are ethical scholars who understand the importance of making a difference in the lives of others. We have over 80 students who serve as morning greeters this year, as well as 32 students who serve on our safety patrol. These students were especially helpful during the first few weeks of school, when our TK and kindergarten students were learning the ropes of walking to their classrooms each morning. Also, on November 9th, we will hold our second annual Veterans Day celebration, where we invite our veterans and active-duty military personnel to come and join us for a patriotic assembly, and then visit classes to interact with our students. Through this event, our students learn about the different roles and importance of our military, while our veterans and military personnel have a chance to be celebrated and honored. A very awesome event. If you're available to come on November 9th, eight o'clock, we invite you to join us. And at Bernardo Elementary, our students are critical thinkers. On November 11th, a team of Bernardo fifth graders will be competing in the annual Lego League competition. Under the leadership of two outstanding fifth-grade teachers, Mr. Odin and Mr. Erdos, as well as support from a local high school team, this group of students is creating a robot that will seek to complete a set of tasks within a three-minute time period. This group of students is truly building the foundation to a great future. Get it, building a foundation, Legos. Come on. It's a slow burn. It might kick in a little later. As you can tell, I am proud, and I love being a part of Bernardo. We have amazing students and families, and I'm excited to recognize these three excellent students that are up here with me at this time. First is Owen Carter, right here to my left. All right, Owen. Owen is a bright, creative, and imaginative fifth grader who has many fantastic ideas that he enthusiastically shares with others. As a result of Owen's hard work and determination, he has experienced incredible academic growth while also developing a reputation as someone who is eager to help others. One of Owen's amazing accomplishments that I'd like to highlight is his attendance. Owen had perfect attendance in third and fourth grade, as well as so far in fifth grade. This is a remarkable feat considering all the challenges that we faced as a result of COVID, and we are extremely proud of him. Owen is an amazing young man, and we're confident he will go very far in life. It's a true joy to honor Owen tonight. Congratulations, Carter. Great job, Owen. All right, next, I'm excited to honor Katrinka Zupanetti, right here to my right. Katrinka is a diligent, meticulous, hard-working, and well-rounded student. She excels in reading and has earned over 1,000 accelerated reader points in the past two years. Katrinka perseveres through difficult challenges, and even though she faced COVID schooling as a kindergartner and a first grader, she has continually made amazing growth and is a model fourth grader. In addition to being strong academically, Katrinka is also an outstanding citizen who serves as a morning greeter lead. She is also an incredible big sister to her younger brother Tristan, whom she supports with unconditional love and patience. Katrinka, shout out to Tristan. Katrinka is a star student, and I'm very proud to honor her tonight. Congratulations. And last but not least, is Ms. Katie Tam. Katie is an all-around wonderful fifth-grade student who spreads positive energy and kindness wherever she goes. She truly embodies the Bernardo spirit of being kind, safe, working hard, and not making excuses. In everything that Katie does, she puts her best foot forward. Even when feeling nervous, she pushes herself to take risks in the classroom and doesn't back down from a challenge. Over the past three years, Katie has grown incredibly in all academic areas, but especially math, where she's made five years' growth in the past three years. This remarkable accomplishment is a testament to Katie's hard work, perseverance, and dedication to being her very best each and every day. Katie is an outstanding Bernardo mountaineer, and I'm excited to honor her tonight. Congratulations, Katie.
All right, and next, from Central Elementary, Crystal Underhill will come up to highlight her students.
Good evening, President Mark Olson, Superintendent Dr. Barr, and EUSD Cabinet members. First off, congratulations to all the award winners thus far. I was actually trying to figure out why we were in the first group, and I was like, oh my gosh, it's totally because we're the best schools ever. And then they go, Crystal, they're actually going in alphabetical order. Anyways, my name is Crystal Underhill, and I'm the proud principal of Central Elementary School. If I could have my Central families, please stand to be recognized. Oh, yeah. And if I could have my Central staff, please stand to be recognized. Okay, so to get to it. Catalina, you're in that picture. It was a TK picture, by the way. It's a sister of ours. Oops, okay. So to get started, every Central student is an empathetic collaborator. Communication skills are an integral part of learning at Central, and collaborating with empathy takes it to the next level. Central students practice this skill daily in their classrooms and through various programs such as Pay It Forward Club, PE Youth Trainer, and our very own Central News Team. So tune in to see for yourself how our Cheetahs are empathetic collaborators. They're not just tuning in to see you guys tonight. At Central, we also are all empowered learners. Students make a difference for our school and, more importantly, for each other and for our community. Our Cheetahs will be more than ready to empower all of us learners. Every Central student is also an ethical scholar. So speaking of scholars, let's introduce you to three of Central's very own ethical scholars. Our first scholar and Student Excellence Award winner goes to Ashley Esparza. Ashley, if you could please join me? Ashley is a hard-working student who is consistently giving back to Central School and the community. Ashley is a member of Now Count It With Me, Pay It Forward Club, Central Safety Patrol, PE Youth Trainer, the fifth-grade band, and Central News. I think it goes without saying, Ashley is quite the scholar. Congratulations, Ashley. Our next Student Excellence Award and Ethical Scholar goes to Derek Alcala. Derek? Derek is a dedicated student who leads through his involvement in school and community activities. Derek is a PE Youth Trainer, part of the Central News Team, is involved in the ELOP STEM Club, and is also learning how to play one of my favorite sports. Oh, not sports, just kidding. One of my favorite instruments, sorry, the violin. And do you recognize Derek? Well, I hope so, because he performed at our back-to-school welcome event, this is EUSD, at the California Center for the Arts. It was music to our ears, Derek. Congratulations. And last but not least, as Mr. Lachey says, our third Student Excellence Award goes to Kyler Calderon. Come on up, Kyler. There you go. That'll look good. Kyler participates in many school activities such as Youth Trainer PE Program, fifth-grade band, Central News, and Derek has my favorite instrument, Kyler has my favorite sport she's learning, volleyball. Kyler is quite the scholar, also reading at a seventh-grade level. She is already halfway to our year-end goal of having read 1 million words. Congratulations, Kyler. As we say at Central, "Wait a be possum," and this is us. This is Central.
Thank you. If we could have one more round of applause for all the recognition tonight. We appreciate everyone coming out to recognize these fine students, teachers, educators, all the staff that support them in their educational settings. It means so much, and it's great that we can recognize them this evening. We will take a five-minute break to allow the those who want to go home and get ready and do finish up the homework to do so. I know we have some others waiting in other rooms, so if they would like to make their way to the boardroom, that would be fine at this time. Thank you, and everyone have a good evening. That will be leaving. Thank you.
In addition to what Mark already has. Because it didn't look like he only had his hands up.
Hey, dear, how are you? Oh, my God.
This is actually installing a new operating system. Do you want to do that?
I don't know. It wouldn't let me. It wouldn't let me. Get into Google, because I had to do an update, so I went in the update. I was trying to go to Gmail. It says, no, you need to update this.
Good job, buddy. Good job. Good job.
Oh, yeah, my gosh, how you doing?
Is that the one that has the vulnerability?
So I will set the time at two minutes per speaker. I know there's a lot of thoughts, emotions, and opinions, so we ask, as we've been able to do at this district, to be respectful of everyone's time. I will promise you will get your entire two minutes and we appreciate everyone's respect, courtesy, regardless of who's speaking. We'll get through this and appreciate you, again, appreciate you being here. So our first speaker this evening will be Barbara Moore. We'll have two minutes and Mr. Levine will set the time.
President Olson and members of the Escondido Union Elementary School Board, Dr. Barra and Cabinet. My name is Barbara Moore. I'm a constituent of Escondido for over 31 years, having raised my children here. And I'm a health educator, having been in the health field for over 40 years, working with families. I'm here to request the Board implement the parental notification policy in our Escondido Elementary Schools for the benefit of children and families. School districts' policies should reflect the importance of the parent's role in raising their child. Parents are a critical component of a child's well-being and when parents are active participants, children thrive academically and emotionally. This is why it is crucial to have strong parent-school partnerships. Such partnerships ensure that the child has a strong network of support outside the walls of the classroom and allows teachers and parents to work together to help identify and address any potential barriers to the child's social and academic growth. My husband and I raised an at-risk child and it was critical that the school personnel informed us of any at-risk behavior so that we could properly care for our child. Understandably, parents object to public schools implementing policies that exclude parents from the affairs of their children. That is why I've collected pages of petitions from Escondido parents and grandparents who stand in support of the implementation of the parental notification policy in our local schools, which I will submit to you. The parental notification policy is a key tool in bridging the gap between the school and the parent, so a strong partnership of support can exist. The policy simply states that parents should be notified if their child has encountered any significant physical injury, expressed suicidal intent, or is requesting to be identified or treated as a gender that does not align with the sex on the student's birth certificate. This brings parents into the conversation regarding some of the most important aspects of the student's life. The benefits of strong parent-school partnerships include academic success, positive school behavioral outcomes and decreased disciplinary issues, social, emotional development with improved social skills, and better mental health outcome, better self-esteem, improved attendance rates, and decreases the dropout rates and fosters a healthy bridge between home and school. I respectfully request that the Escondido Union Elementary School Board join with seven other major school districts in California to implement the parental notification policy in our Escondido Elementary Schools for the benefit of all the children and families. Thank you for your time and attention and your commitment to do as right for children and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker will be Rob Granger.
Dr. Barra and the School Board, thank you for the opportunity to share. I'm a pastor in Escondido and I have had the privilege with my wife of raising both of my sons in the school district in Escondido and we had a very good experience. My oldest son in this, in the district is now an Escondido police officer and the other one has just been hired by the city. But I would like to highlight a few things of the parental notification policy. Number eight says that who has the best interests of kids in mind? Is it their parents or the government? Unequivocally, the parents. Number 10 says the teachers should never have to lie to parents about their children's gender transition in order to keep their jobs. I agree. Number 13, parents object to public schools implementing policies that exclude parents from the affairs of their children, and rightly so. Number 14, public schools are implementing secret transitioning policies under the false notion that the state and federal laws give little children a right to privacy from their own parents, and this is under the guise of deception. Number 15, the parental notification policy is simple. It states that if the school is actively involved in the social transitioning of a minor at the school among his or her peers, if the student states suicidal intent, or if the child encounters significant physical injury, then the parent must be notified. There should never be a place where the parents do not know what is happening with the health and well-being of their child. It is almost as if children have become somewhat of a science project raised in a lab in Sacramento. Education had always been about teaching kids how to think, not what to think, and this must change. When my kids were in school several years ago, these were never issues we had to deal with. Had it been, I would have pulled my kids out of the public school system and arranged other academic opportunities for them. I believe that if the public school system doesn't steer their way back to what was a good, working relationship between parents and schools with parents taking the lead and the government no longer mandating what parents do, then the death knell has sounded for the public school system on what was for us an overall good experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Darla Crowfath? Okay. The pen didn't stay on the page, so.
As easy as it is, it's that difficult. I just want to thank you all for giving us your time this evening. My name, as stated earlier, is Darla Goforth and I've been a community member of Escondido for about 24 years. I've had six children go through the Escondido School District, both private and public, as well as I'm a former educator in the private Escondido Schools. I want to come to you from my experience on both ends, as a parent and as a teacher, and the relationships that I've had with teachers and teachers have had with me. It is important, those lines of communication were essential for raising my children and for teaching other people's children. Withholding information, especially about gender, which is something that is never going to change, children are established to be what they are going to be. Withholding any information from a parent does not foster any healthiness for a child, but rather causes discontentment, it causes confusion. It tells our children that they can lie. It causes deception. This is not a healthy environment for learning, but for chaos and for future confusion. Teachers are there to educate, not indoctrinate. They are there to bring out creativity in a child, to make them be the best person that they already are. That's what a teacher is to be. Parents are to parent, they're to clarify things. And children, they're to be children, not carry a burden of being something they were never meant to be. So I'm asking you to implement the parental notification policy for the sake of our children, for the relationships between parents, teachers, and children, so that our education can go forward and our children can be strong and smart in the way they're already are. They are beautifully made. There's no mistake there. Let's help them be the very best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Dee Crimell?
My name is Dee Crimell and I was a teacher, junior high and high school for 10 years. I subbed here in high school in Escondido School System for about a year. I am a chaplain now in Rancho Bernardo and an associate pastor in Congregational Care in San Marcos. And I came here tonight to share my story. My life was going well. I was a leader in my school and I was a second-generation immigrant. My family was from Germany. But all of that came tumbling down when I was in 6th grade. My boyfriend grew jealous and very possessive and he wanted me to give up my best friend and I refused. He became a bully and he attacked my good reputation. First, he started a rumor that I was a whore. Well, no one believed it. Then he started a rumor that I was a lesbian. You know what? It was somewhat believable because I had a strong personality and I had a cultural background that, you know, that made that somewhat believable. So for three years in junior high, I suffered at the hands of bullies. And if you think sticks and stones don't break your bones and names will never hurt you, you're wrong because they did and it hurt. Did I ever wonder a time or two if they were right? Yes, I did. However, I was so ashamed that I never told my parents and I suffered through it alone. And there were times like these that can make or break you. But God, I am here today to tell you about it. No child should have to go through what I went through, being falsely labeled because of someone else's agenda or social definitions of what a boy or a girl acts like. No one should have to navigate the formation of their identity and their sexuality without their parents knowing what's going on in their lives. Every child has a right to fulfill their God-given destiny without their peers and authority figures labeling them and telling them who they think they are when they themselves don't even know yet. But God, I found my identity in Him and became firmly established as a woman and regardless of what my peers said. Today, their lives hang in the balance and you are the ones who can tip the scales in their directions and give them a chance to grow, be raised, and supported by their parents who birthed them and loved them so that they can fulfill their God-given destiny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Melanakis.
I'm a retired RN, the author of five books, active in many community groups here in Escondido, and a radio talk show host. I reach, my husband and I reach tens of thousands of listeners here in San Diego. More importantly, I'm the mother of three adult children and the grandmother of three young children here in the area that are being raised by their parents. Being active in the community gives my husband and I the opportunity to talk to many parents and grandparents. For every parent here that supports the parental notification policy, and there's a big contingent of us wearing red and some that support it that aren't wearing red, but for every one of us, there are hundreds of other parents that would like to be here that are busy raising children and holding down jobs that cannot be. I can confidently say that ours is the majority view. But it's just, it shouldn't go without saying, it's self-evident truth that parents are endowed by their Creator with the right and the responsibility to raise their children and protect them. So when a school officer of any, or a government officer of any kind, governor, school board member, teacher, any of them, come in between the parent and children bond, that needs to be corrected. This policy to hide critical information from parents about serious issues that children are struggling with was never a law, it was never constitutional, nor was it ever in the best interest of children or their parents. Somebody in the Department of Education just made it up. They don't have the right to do that. Two teachers recognized it as such and refused to compromise their own integrity. The court has ruled it to be a harmful and illegal policy. Here's the record of it right here. Of course, parents must be notified if their children, if their child has been injured, if they are questioning their gender, which is a radical and novel ideology that has serious implications for harm, or if they are having suicidal ideation. This is what this policy says, injury, questioning, or ideation.
Please conclude.
If parents believe that school officials will not tell them these things, if this is the situation, then they must conclude that public school is not safe for their child. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Our next speaker is Amy Booth, to be followed by Melissa Farioli.
Good evening, EUSD School Board, Dr. Barra and EUSD Cabinet. My name is Amy Booth. I've lived in Escondido since 2013 and I'm the parent of two EUSD students. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time coming to a board meeting and my first time speaking at a board meeting. I really never felt the need before tonight. I've been super happy with the education and support provided to both of my students. I'm really grateful to the staff, the teachers, the counselors, the administrator, the school board, who ensure that my students feel safe every single day. And they did feel safe at their schools, up until last spring with a lawsuit that was initiated by two teachers at my child's middle school. And I want to focus the attention on the issue of school safety. I'm speaking up tonight so that this board knows there are members of this community who value and appreciate your efforts. We want there to be steps, we want to continue to have steps taken to ensure that the conversation is about student safety and that all of our students can be their authentic selves at school, that they can find support and that they can feel valued and accepted. We want to ensure that as young people form their identity, they aren't put in harm's way by well-meaning educators who might not value or respect their identity development. I'm speaking up tonight so that this community and this board, you don't fall for rhetorical tricks. EUSD, please continue to focus on student well-being and student safety. Don't fall for the scare tactics that are popping up in so many school districts across Southern California, the arguments about parental rights. Let's focus on student safety and continue to promote student well-being and ensure that all EUSD students feel valued and safe at their school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. Our next speaker, Melissa Farioli, to be followed by Georgine Tomasi.
Good evening, Board and educators. Thank you for taking the time to hear everyone tonight. My name is Melissa. I'm a mom of two and a lifelong North County resident. This is an issue that weighs on my heart as a mom. I pray that I will always have the kind of relationship with my two daughters and with the Girl Scouts in Escondido that I lead that is open and welcoming and that they are safe to come to me with anything on their hearts and on their minds.
But God, I found my identity in Him and became firmly established as a woman and
Please wrap up your comments.
Regardless of what my peers said. Today, their lives hang in the balance, and you are the ones who can tip the scales in their directions and give them a chance to grow, be raised-
Please conclude.
...and supported by their parents who birthed them and loved them so that they can fulfill their God-given destiny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Melanakis.
I'm a retired RN, the author of five books, active in many community groups here in Escondido, and a radio talk show host. I reach, my husband and I reach tens of thousands of listeners here in San Diego. More importantly, I'm the mother of three adult children and the grandmother of three young children here in the area that are being raised by their parents. Being active in the community gives my husband and I the opportunity to talk to many parents and grandparents. For every parent here that supports the parental notification policy, and there's a big contingent of us wearing red and some that support it that aren't wearing red, but for every one of us, there are hundreds of other parents that would like to be here that are busy raising children and holding down jobs that cannot be. I can confidently say that ours is the majority view. But it's just, it shouldn't go without saying, it's self-evident truth that parents are endowed by their Creator with the right and the responsibility to raise their children and protect them. So when a school officer of any, or a government officer of any kind, governor, school board member, teacher, any of them, come in between the parent and children bond, that needs to be corrected. This policy to hide critical information from parents about serious issues that children are struggling with was never a law. It was never constitutional, nor was it ever in the best interest of children or their parents. Somebody in the Department of Education just made it up. They don't have the right to do that. Two teachers recognize it as such and refuse to compromise their own integrity. The court has ruled it to be a harmful and illegal policy. Here's the record of it right here. Of course, parents must be notified if their children, if their child has been injured, if they are questioning their gender, which is a radical and novel ideology that has serious implications for harm, or if they are having suicidal ideation. This is what this policy says, injury, questioning, or ideation.
Please conclude.
If parents believe that school officials will not tell them these things, if this is the situation, then they must conclude that public school is not safe for their child. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Our next speaker is Amy Booth, to be followed by Melissa Farioli.
Good evening, EUSD School Board, Dr. Ibarra and EUSD Cabinet. My name is Amy Booth. I've lived in Escondido since 2013, and I'm the parent of two EUSD students. I'm a little nervous. This is my first time coming to a board meeting and my first time speaking at a board meeting. I really never felt the need before tonight. I've been super happy with the education and support provided to both of my students. I'm really grateful to the staff, the teachers, the counselors, the administrator, the school board, who ensure that my students feel safe every single day. And they did feel safe at their schools up until last spring with a lawsuit that was initiated by two teachers at my child's middle school. And I want to focus the attention on the issue of school safety. I'm speaking up tonight so that this board knows there are members of this community who value and appreciate your efforts. We want there to be steps. We want to continue to have steps taken to ensure that the conversation is about student safety and that all of our students can be their authentic selves at school, that they can find support, and that they can feel valued and accepted. We want to ensure that as young people form their identity, they aren't put in harm's way by well-meaning educators who might not value or respect their identity development. I'm speaking up tonight so that this community and this board, you don't fall for rhetorical tricks. EUSD, please continue to focus on student well-being and student safety. Don't fall for the scare tactics that are popping up in so many school districts across Southern California, the arguments about parental rights. Let's focus on student safety and continue to promote student well-being and ensure that all EUSD students feel valued and safe at their school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. Our next speaker, Melissa Farioli, to be followed by Georgine Tomasi.
Good evening, Board and educators. Thank you for taking the time to hear everyone tonight. My name is Melissa. I'm a mom of two and a lifelong North County resident. This is an issue that weighs on my heart as a mom. I pray that I will always have the kind of relationship with my two daughters and with the Girl Scouts in Escondido that I lead that is open and welcoming and that they are safe to come to me with anything on their hearts and on their minds. Lines of communication are very important, I agree. My job as a mom is to keep those lines of communication open with my child. That sadly is not what every parent strives to do, and we know that. We all know it's a very tragic truth that not all children are emotionally and physically safe in their homes and with their families. Of course, it would be uncomfortable, maybe even heartbreaking, for a loving parent to be excluded from a conversation, a very important conversation about their child. However, putting a segment of children in harm's way by being outed without their permission has the potential to be incredibly damaging and even deadly for many children. That is not protecting our children. Thank you so much for hearing the voices tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Farioli. Our next speaker, Georgine Tomasi, to be followed by Erin Hart.
Good evening, President Olson, the Board members, the Cabinet. I'm here to speak just on some of my personal feelings as a former teacher. I want to make sure that any policy that you would be setting here tonight does make sense for kids, for parents. And one of the things when I taught, and I taught high school for 17 years, and one of the things that was most important for me was safety for my students when I taught them. If they didn't, if I didn't provide them a safe place, they weren't going to learn. Learning is more than just learning the curriculum and learning the subject matter and teaching kids. There's a trust factor that's involved in teaching, a very strong trust factor. And so if you diminish that in any way, that's really going to make teaching and learning very difficult in anyone's classroom, not just my former classroom, I'm retired at this point, but in anyone's. But so, the most important thing for me is that safety issue. And so when we have to be, when we have to go and have deep-level conversations with students on their development, is something that I never did in 17 years as a teacher. That's not my job. My job was to make sure that I taught these kids what they needed to know in order to graduate. And I felt very, very, very committed to that charge. Those kinds of conversations belong in at-home with parents. That's not my job, and that would never be, and I don't want that to be any teacher's job. You know, that has to be between the parent and the student, excuse me, the parent and the child. You know, don't put teachers and staff in that kind of situation. Do we help kids emotionally? Yes, we do. We have a lot of resources. I know from having sat on the board here, we have tons of resources to do that. But deep conversations between, you know, between a teacher and a student should never be part of what I signed up for as a teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Tomasi.
Okay, bye-bye.
Erin Hart. Our next speaker, Erin Hart, to be followed by Juan Vargas.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be heard. I'd like to preface with my statement is with the full knowledge, consent, and approval of my child. I'm a parent who, I'm the parent of a child who's LGBTQ, who's grown up in the Escondido Union School District Schools and has benefited from the education, dedication, professionalism, and caring of the teachers and the quality of education that they receive from these amazing educators. My child's gender identification is non-binary, their gender expression is female, and sexuality is lesbian. My child uses she/her and they/them pronouns. My child has been out since the age of 11 without question or apology. The first person my child came out to was me, and later the same day, her father. Our household is one where we lead by example, where everyone in our home is treated with dignity, respect, and unconditional love. My child has always felt supported, affirmed, and allowed to be exactly who they are. My child is a very high-achieving person, a straight A student in the GATE program, awarded Student of the Year for ASB in the eighth grade last year, president of their Gender Sexuality Alliance Group, a caring friend and active member and participant in our community, an accomplished singer, writer, artist, endlessly creative, and a true leader. When my child came out, we had clear discussions about normal human sexual development. We drew bell curves. We talked about the LGBT community. We also talked about bigotry and hate. To be frankly honest, we experienced none of the negativity, bigotry, or hate that we thought we might have in all of the years that my child was out. However, within two days of the lawsuit on the Rincon campus where my child was a student, my child was the immediate victim of hateful speech and school by other students. My straight A, high-achieving, amazing kid was surrounded by a group of boys and called a queer loser, and a loser because she was queer, as well as other hateful names that I will refrain from saying in this forum. Because of the open relationships with safe adults in the safe spaces that our schools create, my child was able to immediately tell the adults and teachers there what happened. And because she had established those relationships and the adults had nurtured those relationships, she was again affirmed. It took a while for her to be still safe again at school.
Please conclude.
I've been working in Child Welfare Services since 1997 as an investigator, as a supervisor. I will tell you that not all children are safe in their homes, and not all parents are affirming and loving parents. It is important that our children, our LGBTQ children have safe spaces and safe adults.
Your time's expired. Please conclude. Thank you. Juan Vargas, to be followed by Rusty Robinson.
All right. I had this timed to three minutes and I had to cut it down a little bit.
Speak quicker.
Thank you. Try my best. At the last board meeting, a parent came in to speak about an LGBTQ book that she had issues with and wanted removed so that her child would not have access to it. A few days later, I knew library day was coming up, and I asked my kiddos if they had their books ready to return. My son responded, "Oh, the library's closed because I think someone from the state came and shut it down to look at the books." Surely enough, through social media posts and finally a message from Dr. Ibarra in our emails, it was confirmed that he had ordered all libraries to be closed for a book audit. I did a bit of research and found several board policies about what is supposed to happen in the event of a challenged book. If I understand it correctly, Board Policy 1312.2 deals with challenged books. This consists in three levels in total. Level one resolves a complaint by either excluding the material or providing a reasonable alternative. If not resolved by that level, then it goes to level two for review of a team that consists of six parents and guardians and several vital staff members. Closing the school libraries district-wide for an audit is nowhere in the policies. This impacted the voice of other parents and staff to come together as a community to make this decision together. My other concern is this petition that is being put together to supposedly force the school district to inform parents if their student is going by another pronoun or are identifying as another gender. If we care about our children, shouldn't we be embracing who they are? Why should it be up to the schools to tell me what my kids identify as? If it takes the school informing me of what my child identifies as, then what does that say about me as a parent? And truly, what difference is it going to make? Let our kids be who they want to be. Student safety should continue to be at the forefront of the decisions we make as a community. With so much data available regarding the high suicide and houselessness rates in LGBTQ youth, why should our district put themselves in a position to increase that even more? Our students are here to learn with the least amount of barriers possible, and fear of being outed and exposed by the very safe space that is supposed to keep them safe is reckless. They need to be able to come out on their own terms. As a parent in this district, I do not support this petition and continue to support the district's initial policies on keeping our LGBTQ youth safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rusty Robinson, to be followed by, I think this says, Honey Burke.
Hello, Board. My name's Rusty Robinson. My family's been in Escondido for 25 years. Both our children have grown up in schools here, graduated, and went on to college to earn professional degrees in the medical field. Now, both my grandchildren are starting preschool and TK, and I'm a happy and proud Papa. We're glad to have a school board open to hear our feedback and concerns. We are very concerned about the shift in the past few years to take away parents' rights on how we raise our children. Being a parent is the most sovereign right we have, and what we are seeing now, the state and government coming between the family and trying to separate those most basic and fundamental rights that we have as parents. We want strong schools that teach the highest academic standards, that challenge our children to learn and apply themselves to be productive and engaging members of our community here in Escondido. We live in District 5, and we voted for you, the members of the board, to represent us to the best of your ability, and it's a hard job. I know you put in a lot of long hours. We are not for anti-trans policies or anything hateful or hurtful, just the opposite. We love our children, how God has uniquely made each one. We know what is best for them and the challenges they face. We have every right to know what is going on in their lives and to be made aware of any important aspects of their full development. We stand strong and firm in support of the parent notification policy and strongly urge you to adopt it. It is fair and balanced and seeks to promote a healthy and nurturing environment for our children. We stand behind the policy and behind you, the board. We have your backs. We want you to have ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I think, correct me, I think it's Honey Burke.
It is.
Oh, I got it right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to know if you guys can see my heart thumping in my chest. Okay. I started life as a daughter and a little sister, and then I became a student, and then I became a teacher, and then I became a mom, and I hope someday to become a grandma. I've spent some decades thinking about the relationship between children and parents and teachers. So I want to go back for, well, first of all, I want to say that I think that we're here today because we've got two very different definitions of love. My definition of love requires that I do what's best for another person above what's best for myself. My phone just went off. Let me be a teacher for a minute. Okay, you get extra points for class participation. So what are our bodies made of? Every bit of us, our brains, our skin? I heard it. Cells. Okay, and what do those cells have in them?
Please keep the speaker, the speaker's the only one that's to speak right now.
Sets of chromosomes. So when you're born, if you're a girl, you've got two X chromosomes. Every cell in your body has those two X chromosomes. It's true. So regardless of what parts you cut off or what parts you sew on, every cell is giving a message. It's a girl. I think the best way to love somebody is to help them deal with the reality. And who loves children the best? Not always. I realize there are some parents out there that are not good, but I was there when my parents, when my children were conceived, I was there when they were born. I loved them. I was there when they were married. I'm going to be there when they deliver their children. I'm going to be there regardless of what happens in their lives. Please do everything you can to support that relationship with the parent and the child. It's very important.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Our next speaker, Liz Shulock, to be followed by Kim Dunham.
Good evening, Dr. Ibarra, President Olson, members of the board and cabinet. I spoke last time you weren't here, Mr. Olson, but I spoke last time. You know, I'm an active parent in this district. I'm very involved in my kids' schools and at the district level, and I have been since 2012. So I'm very committed to this district, and I already shared last time what I think about this issue and what the district's priorities should be, but I just can't sit and listen to some of this without saying a few things. I've heard, not so much tonight, but that teachers or the schools are somehow teaching our kids to have a different gender or to change their gender, and that's just not happening. Our kids aren't being groomed. That's not happening. No one has ever tried to get my kids to change their name or gender. That's not happening. What is happening is that children are allowed to use a different name and pronoun in the class. And I think the issue is that some people don't like that our schools don't treat transgender identity as a problem or a mental health crisis. They don't like that their kid might learn that it's okay for a classmate to identify with a gender other than which they were born. They don't want their child to think that is an option for themselves. Our schools are public schools, and they serve kids from all backgrounds and beliefs. When I send my child to public school, I know they are bound to encounter views and values different from my own, and I don't expect the school to promote my views over others. This isn't even a secular versus religious issue because I have plenty of Christian friends who don't share these views on gender. I have Christian friends with transgender children. Lumping transgender identity and with physical harm and suicidal ideation is a blatant attempt to promote negative and specific religious views over others. It has no place in our public schools. I will continue to let my kids know they are safe and loved, and they can talk to me about anything. We instill our values in my children at home, and we have faith that exposure to other views and values will not override the values we teach at home. And I would have thought people of faith would be more confident in their parenting skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shulock. Our next speaker will be, our next speaker will be Kim Dunham, to be followed by Michael Sovacool.
My last opportunity to speak to the board was during the pandemic, so I look forward to the opportunity to be more engaged now that things are returning to some sense of normalcy. So what I've heard throughout this evening's presentations is that we are asking our schools to step considerably beyond their intended role. If, as parents, we are relying on schools to be the conduit of communication with our children, we're doing it wrong. If children don't feel safe enough at home to have the conversations they need to have in order to live their best lives and to pursue their wildest dreams, taking away perhaps the one safe space they have, a public school where religion pays no part, it's detrimental to both the child and ultimately society's future. A parent earlier mentioned that if they hadn't agreed with the way that the public schools were teaching their children, they would have pulled their kids from the school and found other arrangements. That is your right to do. Forcing your beliefs on the rest of us is simply untenable. Note how often the term "safe place" is used by those of us who do not support the idea of schools intervening with family conversations. Somebody earlier also mentioned that gender dysphoria is novel, a trend. I beg you, please do some research on this subject. That is simply incorrect and uninformed. I beg to differ that those who identify as speaking for the majority do so. Many of us who disagree are becoming weary of the battle to resist religion infiltrating our public schools. Rather, we trust that the board and the district will do what's best for our students and get back to the business of governing public education for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Michael Sovacool, and if that's wrong, please correct me, to be followed by Jett Fennel.
Members of the board, Doug, Ms. Gardner, good to see you at a different board meeting for once. My name's Michael Sovacool. I'm a resident of Escondido. My daughters go to North Broadway, go Broncos. There's a quote attributed to Sinclair Lewis, and it goes something like this, "When fascism comes to the United States, it'll be wrapped in a flag and carrying a cross." Now historians dispute that he said this or wrote this, but I think he had the right idea. But folks, in 2023, in Escondido, fascism's here, and it's wrapped in book bans and parental They want us to out-trans kids who are coming to teachers for a safe spot. That's not our job. As some have said, that's a parent's job, to have that conversation and discussion with their children. You, on the board and cabinet, have taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Taking that oath, you have a duty to reject the fascism that some are asking you to adopt tonight. Our job as teachers is to teach kids the curriculum and provide a safe spot for them to learn. Our job is not to become the bigotry police to out-trans kids to the public, and we will not do that. And so I- And so I ask you, please, keep the schools as they are, a place for kids to come and learn, and do not put the staff in between in that, in that ground of something that we have no business doing and communicating with parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sovakul. Our next speaker, Jette Fennell, to be followed by Martha Tucker.
Hello, folks. Thank you all for being here. My name is Jette Fennell, I use they/them pronouns. I am the Gender Advocacy Project Coordinator at the North County LGBTQ Resource Center. We are committed to serving the LGBTQIA+ community of North County, and today here in Escondido at this School Board meeting, I can say that we fully reject the parental notification policy. Not only is it dangerous to our children, but it is against California Education Code and it is absolutely unacceptable. And I want to echo a few things that I've heard tonight. I want to echo that it's really important, I think, to look at why a student, a child, would not go to their parents with sensitive information. I know that childhood is far, far, far away for a lot of us, and might be hard to remember, but it's really scary. And if you don't have a safe space in your home, and you don't have a safe space in your school, like it's been said, those suicide rates go up dramatically and it is hard to watch. We have seen in North County itself, we have seen in Oceanside, we've seen in Escondido, Vista, San Marcos, we've seen rates of depression and suicide in our youth go up when policies like this are in place. Tonight, I just want to ask for everyone here to really listen to what is being said. Everything here that is being said is, as another individual said, supposedly coming from a place of love, and if you really, really bring that love to the surface, can you understand that children need to have that safe space, that our youth need to feel free to discover themselves?
Please wrap up.
I want that for them, and I hope that you want that for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jette. Our next speaker is Martha Tucker, to be followed by Sam Shea.
Hello, members of the Board. My name is Martha Tucker. I've raised four children in Escondido schools, and I am opposed to this parent notification pol, excuse me, policy. I think it's a very dangerous policy. I think that it, it puts teachers and staff in a position of judging students. Students need to be free to be who they are and feel safe at school and not put the school in that position. We need a place where people can be themselves and express themselves safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Sam Shea, to be followed by Chris Mulligan.
Hi, my name is Sam Shea, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be speaking here. Um, I'm on the main topic of events as it seems to be seen, but I mainly want to focus on the original lawsuit. Well, I don't want to say original, but what seemed to really get the ball rolling. So Elizabeth Mirabelli and Lori Ann West submitted a lawsuit to the unions, the Escondido Union School District, as well as Rincon Middle School, I'm pretty sure, and they submitted the lawsuit against the policy that protects trans youth by keeping their confidentiality and making it so that they are not outed by their teachers or staff in that area. It is 288 pages of a complaint. It is heartbreaking. I could not read all of this complaint because it genuinely tore me apart. They said that having to keep this, having to give these students privacy gave them nausea, anxiety, panic attacks, insomnia. Mrs. Mirabelli actually had to take 17 sick days. She said she had to take 17 sick days. One in every three under. When the outing rate of trans youth goes up, so does suicide, so does homelessness, so does horrible, bad things, bad mental health things that hurt people. I also want to look at some pictures that they put into complaint. One of the pictures said hatred has no home here. That is what they are against. A picture that says hatred has no home here. There was also a picture that said protect trans youth that they were against. Now, I just want to say, I'm not trying to bring things into play, but as you can see, there are people dressed in red and there are people dressed as blue. This is a lot to do on, well, excuse me, sorry, I just learned about this meeting last minute. I don't have my exact organization. Beside the point, you can see the agenda being spread here, you can see that this is not for the well-being of children, but that this is for the hatred of children. This is fatal. This will kill children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Our next speaker is Chris Mulligan, to be followed by Susie Terry.
Good evening. My name is Chris Mulligan. I am a teacher in EUSD. I am a parent of four children. I also just found about this recently, but I would just like to say a few things, probably nothing super new. First of all, the added that this parental notification, that parents have to be notified if students are severely injured or if they address, you know, the things that we're addressing, that's an extreme false equivalency. Being injured is obviously something parents need to know about. Coming out as trans or gay or anything like that, that is not an injury that your child needs to be fixed. That's just something that they are. I would also say that, as any teacher knows who's had to file a CPS report, the idea that all children come from a living home is disingenuous at best. There are plenty of parents out there who do not have their children's best interests at heart or do not have any interest whatsoever in their children. So the idea that, that parents have to know because, you know, they're going to take care of it or they're going to love their children or whatever, that's just not true in a lot of cases. And as has been mentioned before, if you don't know what is up with your child, then perhaps that's not something that the school is responsible for, perhaps something that you need to look at and, and see what's going on with your relationship with your child. So as with the blue people say, I'm very much against this policy, and I hope that the Board will, will not consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Susie Terry, to be followed by Kathleen Shea.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Ibarra, members of the Cabinet, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here today because I'm an Escondido resident, but also because my wife is a teacher in this school district. Today, the Board is spending time listening to considerations around parental rights and not those of the rights of a student to be exactly who they are authentically as a person. I want you guys to know that I believe any debate over a person's right to exist exactly who they are is an act of violence. I think it's really important for this Board to consider how that act of violence is impacting students and teachers and staff members in your district already. These conversations have an impact on the safety not just of LGBTQ students and LGBTQ staff members, but those students and staff members who have LGBTQ parents or siblings or family members or children. I don't imagine that when most of you started off the school year this year and you were getting ready to go back to work another school year, that you had to have a conversation in your household about whether or not it would be safe. The campus upon which you were going to walk onto would be a place where you felt safe as an employee to be all year long. I don't know if I mentioned that my wife works at Rincon Middle School. We already know that school campuses are not safe for LGBTQ students. You only have to look at the California Healthy Kids Survey to find that out. Something else that you would find out if you took a closer look is that those rates of lack of safety greatly increase for LGBT students who are also homeless. I bring up homeless students, one, because homeless youth are my job, but also because LGBTQ students are overrepresented in the homeless youth community, and that is because parents will still kick their children out of their homes over conflict with LGBTQ issues, which is why a parental notification policy further decreases their level of safety at school.
Please wrap up.
So, I want anyone here that's a parent to know, if you're in favor of parental rights, that if you have a child who's not willing to tell you exactly who they are, then you are the problem, not their teacher.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kathleen Shea, to be followed by Carl Tucker.
Hi, I'm really glad to be here and thank you for hearing all of us, and thank you for being here, Dr. Ibarra and President Olson and everybody else on the Board. I feel like after all of this, I really want to be more a part of being here towards the Board, so I will be, because I am an active, active member of this town. I've been here for 35 years, and I have one kid, that one right there, that definitely stated how he felt, and I am a proud supporting mom of a transgender child, and it's been the best experience of my life. I have to let you know, it doesn't matter how many chromosomes any child has, it really doesn't, and if a teacher at Rincon, where my kid attended, or at North Broadway, got on the phone with me and said, hey, listen, there's something I need to talk to you about, your kid's going by a different name at school, and I think that he, she, or whoever's having issues with their gender, I would think that my kid was in trouble, and I would take it really personally and that there was like a problem going on. And you know what? That didn't happen, and my kid is flourishing. You know why? Because he was able to come out to me on his own, by himself, to me and my husband, and he's just the most amazing child, and he's doing so well, he's getting almost straight A's in school, except for calculus. He's extremely involved in FFA. His life is flourishing because he was able to come out, and he didn't have any safety issues, and he didn't have any parents or any, we're religious, we're Catholic Christians, and there's nothing that's stopping us, nothing that is stopping him being transgender at all, nothing. And I was like, is it because of me, because I were black all my life, or there's things that you can think, you know, because I was always in sports clothes, or, no, it's because it's who he wants to be. So I'm a really proud mom, and I want to let you know that I'm really totally opposed to the parental notification policy. I think that it really goes against my child's rights, his privacy rights. He has a right to be who he wants. Do you know how many kids' names, how many kids did I know that went to North Broadway and Rincon that changed their name about 50 times? Like, you know, like in, within the year? Because they, they felt safe and they could tell me whatever names they were and if they were they/them or he/she, and, and it didn't go out there, you know, and they always felt safe. So I'm totally against it, and I think that they should have their own rights and that they should be able to come to the parents whenever they feel is necessary.
Thank you.
And that we're the most important.
Our next speaker is Carl Tucker, to be followed by Katie Ho.
Good evening, people. My name is Carl Tucker. I'm a retired teacher for over 30 years. I've taught in the Escondido school, high school system. So my parents were teachers, many of my kids are teachers. Really, probably, everybody here tonight is really caring very actively about their children, so we should all feel good that our purpose here is to promote a good atmosphere so you can be able to more accurately determine the mood and the feelings of these people in the district. I definitely do not feel we need an additional parental type of notification. The best place for parents to do their best parenting is at home, and a parent who is actively involved, like, what did you do today? What happened at school today? The parent most likely is going to be able to know what's happening, will be therefore able to talk to that student, and therefore, with that connection at home, then they can talk about actively and sincerely and lovingly what happened at school today. And they want that child to be able to express what happened in school today beyond the academics because they felt safe, so they could feel comfortable talking to their parents. We do not need an additional parental type of notification because I believe everything that is done now is done in the right venue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Our next, our next speaker is Katie Ho, to be followed by John Williams.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm a mother of three here in North County, and one of the things that has sort of already been touched on is my family, our church, would host a Thanksgiving dinner at the LGBTQ Center for years, and that's where my kids grew up spending their Thanksgiving. And the reason we did that is because of the large number of youth that get thrown out of their homes because they were outed, or because they tried to come out and their families threw them out. They were homeless, possibly living in a shelter, but not enjoying a Thanksgiving with a family. And so we showed up and were that family for them. I think this notification letter is going to put a lot more people in that position, and while we really enjoy having Thanksgiving with them, I would like that to not be their position. Secondly, I do want to echo the, the difference between being notified about suicidal ideation and an injury, those are threatening to life. That's very important, and I wouldn't inherently know that that's what happened at school. But again, all of that, all of the, the gender issue, that's something that I would know about my kids because I do talk to them, and they feel safe with me, and if they don't feel safe with me, I've surrounded with many adults that they can talk to, and I encourage them, if you don't feel safe with me, talk to these people. So this notification is really, it's going to increase our Thanksgiving dinner plans, and it's going to, it's going to make these children at risk and homeless, and it's, it's horrific. And as someone else mentioned, the data supports it. When these things happen, those numbers rise. So please, let's keep those kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speaker is John Williams, to be followed by Jackie Abrams.
My name's John Williams. I'm a resident of Escondido. I don't have children, but I do like living in a community that has a thriving educational process. I want intelligent people around me. I hear a lot of people talking about parental freedom, but I don't hear a lot of people talking about the freedom of their kids. I hear a lot of people talking about how they don't want the government in their lives yet they're asking you to intervene in their kids' lives. If a kid doesn't want his parents to know that they're LGBTQ, they're the best person to decide whether or not their parents know.
Please, he's letting, it's his time to speak. If you'd like to speak, you can put in a comment card, please. Go ahead.
And, thank you. And I just, my father, my father was gay, and all of his life, he was hiding it. He grew up in Oklahoma and Kansas, and he was born in 1929, and he wasn't able to know what it was to love someone, really love someone, until the 1990s, for this sort of reason. And I don't think, trust me, it devastated his life. He was never happy. I don't want you to do that to anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Jackie, Jackie Abrams, to be followed by Francesca G.
Thank you. I am a longtime North County resident, Escondido resident. I am an adult and family literacy advocate. I do a lot of public speaking. Please know, I'm not nervous. If my voice breaks, I'm freezing. As kids, we played, and we sometimes played with our children and grandchildren, a game called, "Which one of these things is not like the other?" And that is what we have here this evening. If a child is hurt in school, of course, the family is called. I think there are laws that mandate that. If a child has suicidal ideation, all educators are mandatory reporters. Of course, the family should be notified, as should any other agency that is deemed However, the third issue is not the same, gender issues. If you have a child that is too afraid, intimidated, or for whatever reason uncomfortable coming to you with such a personal issue about his or her gender, you have failed your child. You have failed as a parent. Our children are gifts from God. They are not chattel. We do not own them. It is our function as parents to love them, to guide them, to direct them, and to make sure that they maximize their potential in whatever way they deem appropriate. If a child has to talk to, or chooses to talk to an adult at school, and if that person is forced to involve the parents, the child's trust with that teacher is broken, as is their belief in the educational system. Now, we all know, nobody said it tonight, but we all know, the far-right evangelical Christian agenda to put those people that have that belief into every seat in every school board in the country is what's at play here. As far as I know, we still have a division between church and state. If you feel that you must restrict your child with this kind of initiative, put them in private school. You can do whatever you want in private school.
Please conclude.
In public school, it's a little different. I ask you, please, to vote against this intrusive initiative.
Thank you. Francesca G., to be followed by Rosie Higuera.
Thank you. I'm going to try to be not nervous, and I hope I'm clear. I am old, as you can see, and I remember those days, that when the propaganda was to be homosexual, they were born that way. So they progressively, and I was in England when I saw these people full, you know, converted into homosexual, that's it, not trans, whatever, it was only homosexual. And you must respect them, because they were born like that. That propaganda was in English and Spanish. So I want to know if you let me say this in Spanish for the community, the Spanish community that you have.
You can use your time to speak in any language you'd like.
Hola. Estoy aquí porque yo no veo la comunidad que habla español, la comunidad latina, la comunidad mexicana. Y la razón por la que estoy aquí es porque a nosotros nos manipulan el color de mi piel, el apellido, y todo eso. Somos una comunidad malleable, ustable y desperdiciable. En esta propaganda, en donde están utilizando hasta el mismo dudar que si somos mujeres o si somos hombres, aquí se juega un papel muy importante para criminalizar nuestra identidad, nuestra humanidad. Y si la comunidad hispana no está alerta, y cómo defenderse para este ataque personal al ser humano son los principios. Son los principios que recibimos en nuestros países comunistas, en donde nos trataron como ahora tratan a los trans. Los trans son además usables experimentos porque al finalidad estuvieron trans especies. Son felicidades por aquellos que dicen que quieren ser trans, pero mañana, no muy lejos, al 2050, dice el Foro Económico Mundial, que es el que maneja toda esta gente, que van a hacer lo ideal, una gen para que sean trans. La comunidad latina tiene que pelear, la comunidad latina aquí tiene que decir, tú no usas mi apellido, tú no usas el color de mi piel, yo no soy desperdiciable, yo soy ser humano, y basta.
Please wrap up. Gracias, thank you. Our next speaker, Rosie Higuera, to be followed by Robert Netherton.
Good evening. I would like to talk about the new bills that became law, AB 1078 by Governor Newsom, blackmail against trustees who remove inappropriate material, school districts will be fined. SB 5, teacher training encourage LGBTQ provide indoctrination to teachers on how to force this ideology bent on students. Thousands of radical teachers are in California, as we can see. SB 407, foster care, kids who aren't affirm can be put in gender-affirming home. So if you are a person of faith, there's a case in Oregon, you can adopt, if you're a Christian. SB 760, all public and charter schools need to have all-gender bathrooms, also elementary. This bill gives stiff penalties for teachers who don't affirm. AB 345 provides health care protection for those who do abortions or telehealth and prescribe abortion pill, or if they do gender reassignment surgery. California has tentacles of poison and death they want to spread. AB 254 makes it difficult for parents and law enforcement to gain medical information. AB 352 gives more privacy to those who travel to California for an abortion or for gender surgery. AB 571, abortionists, mutilating doctors will have liability protection. SB 385, a physician assistant can perform abortions. And AB 1486, medical students can come to California and practice abortions and gender surgeries for 90 days. So as you can see, California is radically turning towards harming children, keeping important medical information away from parents. So we are in very, very dangerous territory. So Board, you're given power, voted by your constituents, to represent the communities and families, and to fight for children's and their parental rights. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Rosie. Our next speaker is Robert Netherton, to be followed by Gloria Canejo.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board. I am Robert Netherton. I've been a local resident since 1985. When talking about children, in Matthew 18:16, Jesus says, "But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a great millstone fastened around his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea." This is a profound warning by our Savior. Do not cause children to sin, or there will be severe consequences. Yet we are seeing politicians in Sacramento passing immoral laws that may scar children for life. When did parents lose their rights to raise children, you may ask? Well, just this week, AB 665 was signed into law by Governor Newsom. This egregious bill says a counselor or counselor-trainee can place a child as young as 12. Who in the world comes up with these things? I'm just amazed. A child as young as 12 years old in a residential shelter based only on the child's okay. No parental consent or notification is required, and no allegation of abuse is necessary for this action to happen. Incredible. Another bill, 957, which I'm sure you're all very aware of, signed into law this week, explicitly prohibits school boards from removing or censoring textbooks or library books approved by the state, even if they contain pornographic or age-inappropriate sexually explicit material. You guys know what's better for kids in Escondido than some supervisor or superintendent up in Sacramento. If this evil continues, more and more parents will be forced to take their children out of public school, and I would give them my wholehearted support. I have petitions here, signed by local residents, to support local parental rights. Thank you for listening, and may God bless you with wise decisions on these very disturbing and important ideas coming out of Sacramento.
Thank you, Mr. Netherton. Our next speaker, Gloria Canejo, to be followed by Caroline Epps.
Hi, Gloria Rosario Canejo, she de piyali olis. Reminder that we are standing on unceded indigenous Bimcomicham land, North County, San Diego. I was born at Palomar Hospital. This is my home. This is my comunidad. I went through all the public schools. My relatives, nieces, nephews, whatever they identify as, will go through these public schools. You heard my story as a Native Spanish speaker and queer student last meeting, when we had that mess. And so I won't bore. This week, my Palestinian and Israeli neighbors and loved ones have been deep, deep in my heart this week, as they have since I was educated about the Israeli government's 75-year occupation about five years ago. I thought of one friend in particular, a friend who's Palestinian, who gifted me a book for my birthday last year. He said, "I think you're going to like this book. She reminds me of you." Sor Juana Inés de la Cruz. She's from the 1600s, women's education advocate, she's Mexican, or she was Mexican, she was a Catholic nun, and she was very, very likely a closeted lesbian based on her very beautiful poetry. A year later, after my birthday, today, my spirit was touched by these beautiful words in this book. I was immediately pulled out of my depression this past week. I asked my pa, who was educated in Mexico, about Juana. He told me, "Students, read de la Cruz in Mexico's equivalent of 7th and 8th grade." And interestingly enough, I let him borrow my bilingual copy, because he wants to improve his English reading. Books bring people together. The more diverse, the more affirming, the less they are to 13 Reasons Why. Hint, that is a book for those who don't read, and make it very clear that they don't. Make no mistake, this room would be stacked with all kinds of diverse Escondido residents if more people in my community were educated about some of the fascist rhetoric heard today. ¡Basta fascismo, y sing basta!
Thank you. Our next speaker, Caroline Epps.
Hello, thank you. My name is Caroline Epps, and I'm an Escondido Unified School District mom. I have a 6th grader at Hidden Valley Middle School and a 4th grader at Quantum Academy. One of the speakers had said that, at the public school, the students are not being groomed, but I have to disagree, at least the fact that I feel that the atmosphere that the students are in does breed a lot of confusion, especially for kids at such an early age. My 6th grade son, when he had his first day of school, I asked, "How did school go today?" And he said, "Mom, I was so confused. I had a female teacher, and the first thing she said was, 'Okay, everyone, share a little bit about yourself. For me, I'm gay and German, and my pronouns are he,' I'm sorry, my pronouns are he and they." My son, who's only 11 years old, looked to his other 11- and 12-year-old classmates, all of their jaws dropped. They were so confused. Here was a female teacher saying her pronoun was he and they, and they didn't even know, "Okay, well, I guess I can't call you mrs., I can't call you mr., what do we call you?" It created so much confusion. Talking with teachers at parent-teacher conferences, which we just had, are so important. Those meetings are so valuable to talk about academics, but not just academics, but the teacher explains how your child is doing, social and emotionally. If a teacher cares about the whole student, not just how they're doing with math and science and reading, but they care about the child as a child because they love the child, and if the teacher notices something, I would want that teacher to be able to tell me. And if the teacher tells me something that I believe is a non-issue, or maybe I already discussed it at home with my son, then so be it. Oh, well, that's okay. I'm not really too concerned about that, but at least the teacher brought it up. So I believe that we do need to make school a safe place for all students, but we don't need to create a confusing atmosphere, and we need to create an atmosphere where teachers feel that because they love the students, they love the family, that they should be open and welcome to share what they've observed, and then let the parent decide if they believe it's a non-issue.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank everyone for the respect that was shown on both sides. We appreciate you coming out. I do want to clarify, in case there's any confusion, there is no Board action on any policy this evening, but we appreciate you coming out and sharing your thoughts and your comments. We will take a short break. Thank you for coming. If you'd like to stay with us the rest of the evening, you're more than welcome to, but we'll take a few-minute break. but we'll take a few-minute break. Hello? Mr. Paulson.
I know, I'm always the last one, so I gotta teach ya.
Testing. Okay. Thank you. We're going to continue to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Paulson, for returning.
I didn't know what I am wearing.
I was out in the hallway looking for Ms. Harper.
She was here. All right. We do not have any public hearings tonight. I've been told we have no reports from employee associations, but I do want to recognize that Mr. Beevy and Ms. Krebs were here throughout that, and appreciate them always being here to support their association members. I don't think any written comments have had been distributed, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Any consideration of items that need to be pulled for individual?
I just had a question on one. For, I think it was J4, the Notice of Completion? And I think I've asked this before, but I don't remember what the answer was, so I apologize. I'm gonna ask it again. So I remember, last time I was on the board, we had many projects that were outstanding that had never officially been closed. Did those all get closed?
Those are referring to the legacy projects. Let's see, do we have Roy in the audience? Do we have a status on that?
Not to put you on the spot, I just can't-
Yeah, these were the number of portables, right?
Well, I don't know, there was like 12 open or something like that, that, you know, it was something weird that randomly-
They were left over from when we were installing portables, and we were having a difficult time.
If they're not closed out.
Come to the podium, please.
Go to the podium, Roy. Roy likes the podium.
Your name being Board, Cabinet, and Dr. Ibarra, President Nelson. So as for the legacy projects, we've completed some of them by mitigating them, correcting the foundation issues on some of the reloads that, which are the legacy ones. We basically lifted them up and put a brand-new foundation. So we've corrected some of them, and yet there's still some out there, like admission. So as soon as we get the Mission Phase 3 reboot project going and moving forward, we'll get rid of 25 of them very cleanly. So we are working on them on that.
So after, so only the ones that are left are at Mission?
Well, yes, there was Mission, and we also have the ones known as the LLA, the ones out in the field.
Oh, yeah, the remaining ones.
Those reloads as well.
Okay.
And Marquee, and we got that. And there's a couple of other items, which would be some of the freezers that we gotta work on as well. There's some issues with them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I'll be keeping you updated from now on on those projects.
It was just, yeah, 'cause I remember, it's like, the only thing we're ever liable, could be liable for as a board member, I guess, are those outstanding projects. It's some random thing, so it always, whenever I see a Notice of Completion, it always jogs my memory.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Because I'd like to keep my house, so.
I will keep you protected.
Thank you.
Move approval of the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hands.
I gotta be fast, I know.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Item M1, Human Resources.
Okay, I'll take that one. So tonight, we have the announcement of intent to appoint Commissioner to the Personnel Commission. Recall, the board sought, we sought applications, we got two applicants, and brought the Subcommittee together, Dr. Mr. Paulson and Zestee Harper, and they agreed that the recommendation to the board is to appoint Leela Sackfield to the Personnel Commission. And there's no action tonight. It's really just an announcement.
Okay, great.
Well, congratulations, Mrs. Sackfield. Look forward to you continuing to serve the district. Item N1, Business Services, Investment of Mackenzie Scott Donation. Mr. McGuire.
So at our last meeting, we had a presentation from our financial advisor about an investment option, and tonight, the actual action before you is to give us the authority to then, to do that investment. As we presented, I also, in the attached, and there was the same presentation that we had given. The numbers have not, we have updated them, have not substantially changed from how we were presented, still, as the presentation in today. It's a $665,000 annual interest revenue.
All right. Any questions or a board discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Actually, I looked up the five-year rate on the government bonds, and it was, for five years, I think it was 4.72%. So it looks a little better than what they seem to be anticipating on some of the returns. Is there a reason for that?
The average, the average maturity on, I don't know, the slides don't have numbers, on the investment summary actually is 4.72. Years, I'm sorry, 4.72 years. I could ask our financial advisor about that. I have updated numbers on my device here. I'd have to pull that up, see where it is now.
I mean, the interest rates are continuing to, they expect them to rise once more.
Right.
And those would be locked in, very similar to when we actually go out and finalize all the numbers. So again, it'll be based on what the market is at time, but once you lock it in, that is what will be there for the five-year.
Yeah, well, that's what I looked up. I didn't look at different lengths, I just looked at the one rate for five years, and it was, it was at that, and I think that would be a good investment. But I hope we'll get the best rate. And I hate the idea of, once you invest, then there's a discount, and it takes, you have to make it back up again. I don't understand that, but I have to trust those who have the educate, the background in finance.
As of a couple days ago, when we got the updated numbers, it was 4.66% in this, how we would invest, but again, that would fluctuate up to the point when we actually-
When we actually invest.
Right. And then I'll give you that interest rate that we locked in at-
Okay.
-for the five years.
Thank you.
If, in fact, you pass this.
Well, I mean, sitting where it is, it's not earning half what we should be.
Right.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Staring contest.
Don't you, don't you, the seconds?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
I just don't-
The motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Staying with Mr. McGuire, I believe.
And because that previous item passed, now we need the second item here in this package, and that's to decommit the Mackenzie Scott funds. So as you recall, previously, the board took action to commit those funds, and only the board can take action to decommit them, and we would need that in order for us to then move them into the investment account to carry out the first item.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously 5 to 0. Dr. Philia, item N3.
Yes, we are looking for approval for the new, for our new reclassification criteria using the Alternative LPAC assessment, and that's specifically for our special education students.
Questions or comments?
Well, I feel confident on this one, so I'll move to approve. I will second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously 5 to 0. Staying with Dr. Philia.
The next one here is, we're asking for approval of our site-level family engagement policies, as is required for a Title I district.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And the motion passes again unanimously 5 to 0. Dr. Ibarra, item N5.
Yes, we're asking for approval to adjust our Avid hourly rate increase to match the minimum wage increase for effective January 1st.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. All in favor? Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. And finally, Dr. Ibarra.
That'll be Mr. McGuire.
I'll take this one.
Oh, fine.
So, working with our friends with AAA, we had this MOU in place last year, and this is to pay teachers for, if they were to use their prep time to substitute for covering other absences, as well as compensating our PE teachers for a similar situation when they're covering extra classes. And so this was, MOU we had in place last year. We updated it a little bit, and now bringing it before you for approval at this point, for the rest of this year.
Move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Doug was unsure.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. All right. Item P1, Board Members and Board Presidents Report. Ms. Harper.
Yes, thank you so much. I attended the NETS meeting, which is the New Teachers Committee. Really enjoyed that. That was very well organized, and they give such great support to our new teachers, and they really think through everything. It was exciting to see their thought process on things and how they're willing to change the process to better suit new teachers. So I wanted to give a shout-out to that, that whole team over there in the NETS. They are fantastic. I toured Heritage Flex Academy with Dr. Ibarra. I also attended my youngest daughter's field trip to Biz Town down in Mission Valley, which was fantastic. I had never been there, and it was really neat, and she was the CFO of US Bank and took that very seriously.
Perfect, perfect for Penny.
Penny was perfect at it, exactly. It was great. I was, I was volunteering in the city hall, and we had the cops and the judge there, which was very entertaining, because everyone was guilty the minute they walked in, without even saying anything, they were guilty.
Give somebody a little power.
Oh, it went right to his head. It was great. It was great. But yeah, it was a great program they put on there, and then I was excited to see that they had opportunities for middle schoolers and up into high school, other financial programs, which, you know, I'm sure we've already looked at. So really enjoyed it, and that's my report.
Great. Mr. Paulson?
I want to thank CSCE for a very good meeting tonight, and really want to thank all of our classified staff for everything they do every day to keep our schools running at a high level. Thank you all.
So I had the opportunity to represent the board at the last Ninth District PTA meeting, and I was so pleased to see such a wonderful turnout. The boardroom was full, all the tables were full. Yeah, most schools were represented, and the benefit this year is the president of the club also owns Yogurtland. So a special treat was, was a choice of your favorite flavor of yogurt.
That's how you get people to yogurt.
Yes, exactly right, yes. But they do, they're very serious, and they stay right on task and right, right on time, move the meeting along. I was very, very impressed with the professionalism, but also, I'm so grateful for parents who get involved like that, and, and it means a lot to the kids, and it means a lot to the schools, to have that extra help, and they raise funds to do extra things. I also had a great time. I've never gone before, but Escondido Education Foundation, in collaboration with the Assistance League, held their annual fashion show, and I actually had a great time, and I, they sold out. Do you know, they, there wasn't another ticket available a couple of days before the event? So I'm glad I got my, my reservation in, and I'm glad I went. I saw a lot of people that I hadn't seen for a long time, and I plan to go next year. Just make sure if you want to go too, get your, get your tickets early, because I think it's a growing, a more and more popular event. And then today, of course, we had our insurance committee meeting, and just as a warning to, to everyone in the district, the rates are going to be coming out, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of cheering surrounding them. So, but I think it's the same all over, that insurance rates, health insurance rates are just going up and up. But I, I ask you to be prepared and have patience. We're seeing if there's any way we can help, but I don't know. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gartner. Mr. Houston?
I just wanted to also thank CSCE for allowing us to have a discussion with them this afternoon. It was very, very pointed, and we really import, we really enjoy having that time, and we enjoy all the work that they do, and just want to thank them, and that's it.
Great. Thank you. And I will just report that I attended with Dr. Ibarra the City Council, City Council and the School Subcommittee. It was back on the 26th. I appreciate your forgetting, because I wouldn't have anything to talk about. It was good. It's great to get together with the high school district, as well as the city officials and some city staff, to discuss how we collectively can improve our community. A couple of key items that were discussed were, were safety. We shared, and Mr. McGuire shared, some of the safety components that we've implemented here in the district, which I am, I think we're all on the board very proud of the forethought and the vision that we're trying to ensure. We do everything we can to keep our campuses and our students and staff and families safe. So that was a good discussion. We also talked about some potential joint-use projects that could be collectively serve the community. the community, as well as our schools primarily, but also, can we be a force for making Escondido better, not just from our school districts, but also the community as a whole, and how we can work with the city to, to potentially help guide them in the right direction, but also make our city a better place. So it was good, it's great to meet with the city officials, and I enjoyed that time. That's really the end of my report. Dr. Ibarra?
No report this evening.
Any cabinet reports? All right, I appreciate that. Well, we will have the announcement of the next meeting is, I'll go to this one, October 26th. It's, I believe, it's the workshop. We have a workshop October 26th at 6:00 PM, held here, held here at the Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, and we will not be going back to closed session. We don't need to report out of it, and so with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.